Hey, good evening. It is seven thirty six P M on Monday, June fifth. I call to order the special meeting of the Common Council of June fifth, two thousand twenty-three. If you will please rise and join me in pledging allegiance to our nation's flag.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America.
Thank you. Dixon, if you please call the role.
Mister Burnett.
President.
Mister Camacho.
Here.
Mister Goldstein.
Here.
Miss Najelski-Eichner.
Present.
Miss Smith.
Here.
Miss Ayers.
Present.
Mister Huberman.
Present.
Miss Revellus.
Here.
Miss Young. Mister Cite. Miss McMur.
Present.
Miss Alterman. Mister Meek. Miss Shanahan. Miss Young. Mister Cites. Miss Alterman. Mister Meek. Miss Shannon. We have nine. We have a quorum.
Nine present. We have a quorum. The next item on the agenda is public participation. I see no one in the council chambers. Do we have anybody? Oh, Mister Livingston is okay. Mister Living is then is going to address the council.
Mayor Relling and members of the common councils, um, that makes them twenty-three rocket street. This is from me. Long time no see. Um, I just want to come up and I want to publicly thank the members of the Charter Revision Commission. Uh, we asked a lot of them. We asked them back in September to look at our charter, a charter that had not had a significant revision since ever, uh, since nineteen thirteen. And they delivered. We asked them to restructure and reorganize the charter into a more accessible and understandable document for our residents. Make it a document for the twenty-first century. They've done that. They they have spent countless hours of their time and many evenings and weekends working on this and you know, I know when I ask people back in September, August, September last last year, I don't think anybody I recognized the amount of work that was involved and you guys all did it. You did it without complaint. And I think that our city is indebted to you. So, uh, thank you very much for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Livingston. I see no one else in the council chambers so that I know what to, uh, address the council. Do we have anybody on the uh, in the public that would like, uh, on the on the Zoom? That would like to address the council? Okay, I see two attendees. Uh, they're not raising their hand.
No.
Hey, uh, Miss Cece or Miss Eddie, Edie? If you wish to address the council, would you please signify? The Cece is raising her hand?
Miss Cece, you've been promoted to panelist. Please stay the mic.
Good evening, Miss Cece. Uh, you now have the floor.
Can you hear me now?
Now we can.
Okay, sorry, there's a little delay in joining as a panelist. Um, I wasn't actually sure if I was going to speak. I thought there might be a whole slew of people speaking, but then when you called me out by name and identified me sitting here at home on Zoom, I thought, well, maybe I'm compelled to speak. I will. I'm not sure if that's protocol or not, but here I am. So now I will speak. Like Mister Livingston, I also want to express my gratitude toward the Revision Commission. Um, I observed many of the meetings and, uh, read the results and I know that it was many evenings and many hours and a lot of work went into it. Due to the size of the charter. But I I I disagree with the concept of, uh, what he just said of asking a lot of them because, um, not that it wasn't a lot of work, but I think that the scope, as I understood it originally, was the definition that's in the beginning of the report for you. Um, that basically the idea was to clean up the charter. Um, and by bringing it into the twenty-first century, I thought that meant just the reorganization and the language in the charter and getting rid of some obsolete code, et cetera. And originally, we're told that there wouldn't be anything that would pertain to changing the way that government operates. And yet we we ended up with, um, at least one item in here that I think significantly changes the way government operates, and that's a recommendation that I'm still actually struggling to understand where it came from. Maybe maybe one of the council people will ask this and get an answer to it, but, um, I think one of the biggest issues you're already aware of that's controversial is the recommendation for a four-year mayoral term. So if the original goal was really to clean up the document, make it more accessible, more understandable, more readable, um, more more, um, relevant for for people and like I said, to get rid of obsolete things. I'm not sure why we have such a drastic change that does impact the role of government and how the city would operate with having a four-year term for the mayor. So I hope that you'll consider that. Um, I think that most of you are probably already aware that there was a lot of, um, public input in regards to that particular item. And then I would say that I don't think what made it in here are other items that several people, uh, repeatedly had asked to be considered. And perhaps you can consider it, um, when you look at the draft and maybe send it back for more comments. One of which was taking a look at all of the boards, agencies, authorities, commissions and committees, and considering are they right-sized? In some instances, two in particular, the Traffic Authority and the Police Commission, um, a number of people from the public spoke up that the those should be moved from three member commissions to at least five member commissions. And another ask, um, that myself and others spoke about was to look at the possibility of establishing a citizen review board um, of the, uh, police and emergency services. And I think that that was also not included or recommended or was rejected. I'm sure there's a few other things, but again, I'd like you to keep in mind as you're as you're looking through this of what the actual charge of the Revision Commission was. And, um, for some of the things that are most controversial that made it in here, I hope you'll reconsider them and I hope you'll consider some other items that didn't actually make the cut. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Miss Cece. I don't know if there's anybody else. Let me just take a quick look. The only other person I see on the attendee list is Nicole Edie. I don't know if there's anybody else that wishes to address the council. Seeing none, uh, we will close public participation. The next item on the agenda, I'll turn over to Mister Burnett.
Thank you, Mayor Really. Uh, item four on the agenda, it reads as follows: Presentation of the Draft Report of the Charter Revision Commission from Chair, um, um, of Russia, Vice Chair McQuaid and other members and attorney Stephen G. Bednick. Um, this is our first of several meetings that the council will conduct reviewing the work of the Charter Revision Commission, which as stated, we're very, um, appreciative of the work that they have done in terms of, um, reviewing the current charter, um, looking at the necessary changes to make it user-friendly as well as encompassing input from, uh, the community through various public meetings that they've held. And now we're at the point where a report has been submitted as of June second. And, uh, the chair of the commission, uh, will walk us through some of the highlights that, um, the commission has worked on and allow the council to, um, ask questions uh, initially tonight, as well as as we dig deeper into, um, through the various workshops with the ultimate goal of being in the position to, um, provide action, which I believe, um, based on the 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 timeline would be on July seventeen. And then at that time, the proper wording in terms of the item going on, the, um, ballot uh, will be in the position to present that wording to the public. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to the the chairperson of the commission to begin to walk us through, um, the, uh, supplemental.
Thank you, President Jack Barrett. Uh, I'd like to introduce the members of the commission that are here, uh, tonight. Um, we have, um, Anita Raleigh Watford and, uh, Carl Dickens is with us. Other members had a conflict with with this evening. Um, and that was, uh, Rick McQuaid, who might be able to join us later. Um, Tyler Fairborn had two me- two city meetings in in Greenwich that he had to attend to. And, uh, Angela, uh, Wassumi, I believe, is on, um, Zoom. And Michael, oh, and Michael Witherspoon is on Zoom. Well, finally, we're here. Um, we're breathing, I think, a sigh of relief. It was an awesome task for under- for us to undertake. And, um, I think we have, um, come up with some solid recommendations and and, uh, ideas for moving Norwalk forward and making our government work, uh, a little better than it has, uh, in the past. And when we started with the commission, um, I I was a graduate at Yukon and a government major there, and, uh, this has gone back into the fifties. Um, and my government teacher, uh, used the Norwalk Charter as an example of the most convoluted charter in the state of Connecticut. Now, I'm not a Norwalk resident, so I didn't even know where Norwalk was then, but here I am now, and I can remember him. I can see him saying this and laughing about the charter and you should you should read it. I didn't read it at the time, but I certainly have read it since. So, um, uh, it's, uh, it is a challenge. Um, we have presented to you our formal comments along with the with the the changes, uh, a summary, a formal summary, and I don't know how detail you want us to go through it, but I I think to get a feeling of how we approached, uh, this project is, um, uh, I think most of us did read the charter as it existed. Uh, as it exists. And, uh, it is a bit overwhelming. And it certainly takes you back, uh, a hundred and ten years to when the people that lived in this area decided to become a city. And, uh, and the efforts that they went to at that time in order to, um, protect their little domains, uh, that they had, but to, uh, look forward into the future so that, uh, we would have a city. And at that time, apparently, the, um, population of Norwalk was about twenty-five thousand people. And I believe Norwalk now is ninety-two, ninety-three thousand. And so that demonstrates very clearly how important it is to have taken on this challenge at this time and bringing our our document that governs, uh, that instructs us how we govern our city and and, uh, protect our city and our citizens to, uh, to, excuse me, twenty-twenty-three. So that was our focus. And, uh, the first step that we took under the guidance of our, uh, very knowledgeable counsel, Steve Mednick, was to uh, to reorganize or to call out all of the different aspects, uh, that related to one another into, uh, into a form that that, uh, gave us a start on how to look at what was all in the charter, because as you know, or I assume that you know, everything is sort of piecemeal throughout, so there's never a reference uh, area where you can go to find out what you might be interested in and learning. It was very confusing. So that was one of our first steps and and then we felt it was very important for understanding uh, of of the charter and how to use the charter to create a, uh, table of content which didn't doesn't exist currently, so that you never know where to look for anything. And then along, uh, with that was, um, in trying to get rid of the archaic language that permeated, uh, the current document. And, um, also, um, the, uh, to to, uh, get, uh, gender neutrality throughout, uh, the document, there was a lot of 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 language changes that needed to take place. So, um, that's just even beyond the content of itself. So we did focus on that and, uh, for many hours and and many redlining and crossing out and, um, um, and hopefully we've got them all, all of the non-gender neutral, um, items out and of the, um, archaic, uh, legalese that we felt that we could eliminate and bring us forward to twenty-twenty-three. Um, so with that, would you all have a copy of our transmittal? And I don't know if you want me to read some of it or how you want to proceed. Um, can you give me some guidance on that, Ed?
I mean, I think that to the extent that this is a public and public may not have the
The document.
materials that we have, I think maybe it might make sense to
Okay.
to be more detailed.
Okay, so I shall begin. Uh, this, we are presenting the draft report for submission, uh, to the to the Common Council and City of Norwalk and to our town clerk as as required. Um, so pursuant to, uh, section seven, one ninety-one of the Connecticut General Statutes, we are pleased to submit to you the draft report of the Charter Revision Commission in the form of a proposed charter revision for the City of Norwalk dated June one, twenty-twenty-three. This report is the culmination of a Charter Revision Commission process that began with an organizational meeting on September twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two and continued with nineteen additional meetings, including the first statutory public hearing on October twelve, twenty-twenty-two, a second public hearing on April nineteenth, twenty-twenty-three, and a final statutory hearing on May seventeen, twenty-twenty-three. The final meeting adjourned on June one last week, twenty-twenty-three. For one hundred and ten years, Norwalk has lived with remnants of a special act charter and enacted almost fifty years before Home the Home Rule Act. Over the years, the document was subjected to piecemeal amendments first by special acts and under the Home Rule Act through charter revision at least thirteen times. Now, on the ninth of August in twenty-twenty-two, the Common Council made a decision to create, uh, the Charter Revision Commission for the express purpose of reviewing, uh, reviewing and reorganizing the document comprehensively, not to reform the government, but to rather to restructure and reform the document. The era of piecemeal alterations were was over. The resolution charging the commission specifically included two chapters. Restructure and reorganize the charter into a more accessible and understandable document, both for our residents who expect an accountable and responsible government and to our public officials who are charged with the responsibility of conducting the business of government in accordance with the provision of the charter. And to determine the relevance and utility of provisions of the historical special acts which formed the foundation of the charter to a twenty-first century municipality, including the roles of the mayor and the executive departments and other public entities. The legislature functions of the common council, the budget process, the regulatory oversight and policy roles and responsibilities of the boards and commissions and certain elected positions established by the charter. The charter of the city is essentially our constitution. It lays out the form of government, the process procedures to be followed in creating laws and the rules that govern the conduct of our public officials. When a citizen picks up the charter, they should be able to find what they are looking for. The current charter opens up with some highly legal language laying out the territorial limits of the city, council, district, boards, some hold old information pertaining to town meetings, the privileges and immunities and the cities of Norwalk, South Norwalk, uh, East Nor- East Norwalk Fire District and the Town of Norwalk. Miscellaneous provisions dealing with the building, owning, leasing, using docks and wharves, piers and bridges and property along the waterfront, the care and maintenance of sewer systems. The charter then takes the reader on a sixty-two-page journey through the first, second, third, and sixth taxing districts, which is not exactly a logical starting point if someone wants to learn about the structure of government in Norwalk. Most of these provisions were perhaps useful in the early twentieth century. That period in our history was an area of a consolidation and into integration of formerly separate communities. However, over a century later, the current charter doesn't tell you much about the way the city is governed. A reorganization and changes on the edges, our commission took the charge of the common council seriously. The proposed charter will be replaced with, uh, with unsystematic document that the city has used for self-government since nineteen thirteen. The commission does not recommend any change in the form of government. The intention is to organize the document with an emphasis on clarity, accessibility, and relevance to the times we live in. We are proposing a reform of the document while you will see a number of changes on the edges. They are designed to improve public understanding of the government and again, not to alter the operations of the government. Before we get into the substance of the changes, I would like to focus your attention on the organization of the document. Um, I don't know if, uh, Council Mednick wants to say anything at this point.
Yeah.
Sure. That'll give me a water break.
Thank you, uh, give the chair a little break. Um, my name is Steve Mednick. Thank you very, very much. Um, I've been counsel to the Charter Commission. I've met with you uh, some time ago. We talked about the theories of charter revision. Now we're dealing with the actuality. So I want to thank the mayor and the president, former president, uh, of the body for their, um, courtesies to me in in the past year or so, uh, and, um, and and to my, to the commission. It's been an outstanding commission. You guys did a great job appointing this commission. Um, it was, uh, you know, very low on on ego and very high on energy and and dedication to the the task and and it makes my job as counsel much easier. I want to talk to you about for a few minutes and we'll get back to the chair to walk us through, and I'll be happy to do colored commentary as we go through in the in the evening. As you look at this document, you're going to see at the end of the document a a very, very large number of end notes. Um, what we did, because we were taking old historic provisions out of the charter is we, uh, wanted to make sure that you could look back ten years from now and see what we did. Um, and what provisions existed that don't exist any longer. And so that you'll see the connection between what's in the charter and what has been taken out of the charter. Uh, one of the big end notes is, um, an end note that you'll see when we get to the section on the the common council, on your section in the charter. Uh, under the current charter, there were like seventy-nine separate powers that were granted, uh, in addition to many others, but this was your grant of power, uh, was literally seventy-nine, uh, items, uh, most of which are covered by the Municipal Powers Act, which did not exist, uh, when the charter was written in nineteen thirteen. And so when if you look at that end note, you will see the provisions of the Municipal Powers Act next to the sections that were taken out of the charter. And in the body of the document, you'll see a general grant of authority. And you'll see some remaining remnants of the special act. Uh, one of the points, uh, uh, that I think is quite interesting, uh, as a person who used to be a representative of this of a city in, uh, in in, um, New Haven, Connecticut, is that you have the ability to regulate guns in the city of Norwalk. It was granted by the General Assembly back in at some point. I don't know whether it was precisely in nineteen thirteen, but it was granted. I left that provision in. It's a unique provision. It's a unique power. Whether you're going to able to exercise it or you end up at the U S Supreme Court. If you choose to exercise it, I think it was a power that was worth leaving in the document. That's the most significant one that was left in, but you will see some of those powers that remain there. Uh, so I just wanted to bring your attention to the, uh, the end end notes. I'd be happy to, uh, defer to the chair and I'll be back up when she asks me to do so.
Okay. Uh, we'd like to point out that the proposed revised charter begins as it should with a complete, uh, with a couple of of tools that should uh, familiarize the reader with its content and reach. The first issue I'd like to address is the provision the commission added called setting the context. While the charter is a legal or local constitutional document and not a reference manual, the commission strongly believed that it would be beneficial to our citizens to understand few matters at the outset and which are, uh, what is the function of the city charter? Why was the charter revised in twenty-twenty-three? How was the charter reorganized? What major changes were made in the twenty-twenty-three revised charter? Uh, we have explained some of these issues in the opening portions of this testimony and will address the major changes as we review each of the articles, so I'll not dwell on the overall organization of the the, uh, document. The charter is broken down into three distinct parts. Part one enumerates all entities, officials, and processes for the general government of the city, including the Board of Education. Part two includes all of the provisions that govern the first, second, third, and sixth taxing districts. Part three details special action provisions that will be placed by ordinance once those changes take place, um, uh, along with a validating legal opinion from the Corporation Council. These transition provisions will be repealed and extricated from the charter by operation of law. The second issue is not a revolutionary provision, yet it is a vital addition to the charter. And that's the table of contents that we hopefully will help everybody be able to find where to go to get the information they want. The point we want to emphasize is that we are trying to make the governing document as user-friendly as possible. We instructed our lawyer to avoid legalese and we're generally pleased with the result. However, when you are working with language that was drafted beginning of last century, it is not always possible to to avoid all of the potholes. The contacts will walk you through the the charter. Uh, Article, uh, one in corporation, construction, and general powers. Article two, construction and standards of general application of the charter of the city of Norwalk. Article three, elections, electors, election officials, elected officials, terms of office, and other provisions applicable to city officials. Uh, four, the common council. Five, the mayor. Six, other elected officials. Seven, boards and commissions. Uh, eight, department and department heads. Nine, education. Ten, budget, public funds and finance and, um, ten, ten, public, but, uh, excuse me, and eleven, transition and miscellaneous provisions. Um, this is not an achievement that the commission will rest its laurels upon. It's just that we felt that it was the right thing to do and long overdue. A a brief comment about the taxing districts. There are no changes in government provisions of the first, second, third, or sixth taxing districts as set forth in part two. As I mentioned, part two of the charter consolidates all of the current provisions of the charter as well as other provisions that we were not found in the current taxing dis- provisions. In the view of the commission, we wanted to allow the reader and taxing district residents to have a place where they could find out about the taxing districts and the role they play in different parts of, uh, Norwalk. The commission also thought it was important to spell out the difference between the service districts called the fourth and fifth taxing districts, which share an historical name with the actual taxing districts first, second, third, and sixth, however, are not separate legal entities with governance and taxing authority. The terms are defined and entitled, uh, fourth taxing district, fifth taxing district, and taxing districts. We are further, uh, we also further We are further, uh, we also further explain the purposes of the taxing districts in a note at the foot of page one eleven at the commencement of part two. While the commission recognized and believes that the taxing districts are a, an, uh, important and vital cog in building the quality of life for residents of Norwalk, it is not a suitable starting place to gain an understanding of the operations of the general um, uh, government by having it in, uh, the opening comments of, of the document. Themes and findings of the commission. Throughout the process, the commission was steadfast in its adherence to the notion that the charter should encourage and facilitate, facilitate public engagement. The proposed revisions address this issue in many places. It starts with the definitions discussed below, where we provide fulsome definitions designed to fully utilize new technologies that were used uh, of necessity during the pandemic. A conveyor of a meeting or a meeting of the public has one place to go to find out what constitutes a public meeting and how public notice, public uh, meeting notice, or hearing notice are defined, all by state law, including the following. Where posted notice can be found, physical and electronic notice, or if required by state or federal law or ordinance, newspaper notice. What is included in the agenda, including content of matters before a body, how to participate in or contribute to public hearings, and what rules apply to public participation, and when a public hearing is required. Public engagement is also addressed in our provisions on boards and commissions, departments, and the pub, and the budget process. Uh, approved actions of the Charter Revision Commission, Article One. This article simply restates the, the provision pertaining to the incorporation, construction, and general powers of the city, while eliminating a number of antiquated special act provisions. Article two, this article introduces members of the public to the charter document by defining terms and trying to establish, establish a foundation for meaningful public participation in public processes governed, covered by the charter. There are a number of new and innovative provisions. The proposed charter expands the definitions section to include thirty-four definitions designed to improve public understanding of common terms used in the charter uh, as follows: Appointing Authority, uh, Board of Commission, Budgeted Entity Charter, City Law, Majority Vote of the Council, Mayor, Meeting or Public Meeting, Meeting or Public Meeting, Meeting or Hearing Notice, City Clerk, Capital Budget, Capital Budget Items, Common Counsel or Council, Confirmation by the Common Council, Days, Departments, Department Heads, Division Chief, Elected Public Officials, Elector, Five-Year Programs of Capital Expenditures, Fourth and Fifth Taxing Districts, General Statuarts, Operating Budget, Public Official Or- Ordinances, Public Hearing, Public Notice, Referendum, Regulations, Resolution, Special Act or Special Law, State of Connecticut, State Constitution, Taxing District, Town Clerk, and Vacancy. In sync with the objectives of clarity and accessibility, Article Two addresses standards of conduct, which are set forth, including the notion of public engagement, equitable treatment of all residents, and the critical importance of conflict of in- interest policies to avoid the appearance of an insular political system. In addition, the charter will also include rules of order and civility, addressing need for mutual respect in the workplace and decorum at public meetings. This provision is designed to encourage debate and differences of opinion in an environment protected, uh, protected by rules or procedure that are fair and clear. Finally, Article Two includes affirmations of a policy of open meetings, access to public records, cooperation between city officials, and diversity on boards and commissions. Article Three, this article addresses the city's elected officials, terms of office, and elections themselves. We are recommending repeal of many of the special act provisions dealing with elections in accordance of the fact that Title Nine of the General Statuarts covers that, the field with respect to elections of municipal officials. In addition, the commission recommends the elimination of the following city officials at the conclusion of the term of office following the twenty twenty-three municipal election cycle, that are treasurer and board of selectmen. Moreover, we are recommending a four-year term of office for the mayor following the twenty twenty-seven municipal election. In the same context in which we are recharging a document that was approved in nineteen thirteen, we need to come to grips with the reality that our city is completely in a very different environment than that of the early twentieth century. Norwalk is a municipal corporation with a budget of just under one-half a billion dollars a year. Like many other municipalities in Connecticut and throughout the nation, we, the people of this city, feel we need to re- uh, recognize the continuity and steadiness in the operations of the executive function, functions of government are critical as we cope, face, and, and cope and face the complexities of government, governance in the twenty-first century. We recognize that there are many who look uh, at the four-year term as a hot-button issue was, was rejected by the voters a decade, a, a decade ago. We are keenly aware of the fact. We also believe that it is an important issue that requires further deliberate and cognitive debate. If it is not presumptuous, we want to suggest that the common council consider making the four-year term a separate question on the ballot in November of twenty twenty-three. We are also endorsing changing the term of office to commence the first business day of January following the election in twenty twenty-five. At the present time, the cur- the term commences a week following the election. This will, uh, this change will allow the better uh, coordination and transition between outgoing and incoming administrations. In order to accommodate the extended time between the election and commencement of the term, there will be a transition office for the mayor-elect, and restrictions on the outgoing mayor's ability to take actions following the election. The proposed charter also acknowledges the necessity of compliance with district reap- reapportionment for the common council and Board of Education members as required by federal and state law. We also include provisions that establish clear, clear standards and procedures addressing the temporary absence and/or disability of the mayor, including this accession of a council president as acting mayor. Article Four, while there are no substantive changes, the proposed charter recognizes the common council as legislative authority as provided for and re- and required by the general statutes. Moreover, we have recommended repeal of almost eighty special act powers clauses and replacement by the authority granted generally under Title Seven of the General Statutes, and more specifically, the Municipal Powers Act. On the other hand, we have retained several special act provisions where a unique authority was granted by the General uh, Assembly uh, to the common council, and these are the issues that uh, Council Mednick uh, referred to. The commission made no recommendation regarding modification of compensation with the common council, although we believe it is an issue that should be addressed in the near term. We also retain the current rep- referendum system, also referred to as a petition for overrule. Article Five, as with the common council, there are no substantive changes for the mayor. We are not saying that the balance of power between the mayor and council does not require further examination. It is just that our focus was on reforming the document, not the government. We did address the organization of the office of mayor and believe that a chief of staff or equivalent position needs to be recognized by the charter. Article Six, this article assembles in one place the other elected municipal officials, including the town clerk, registrar voters, constables, and sheriff. Article Seven, the commission has recommended substantial overhaul to provisions of the charter governing boards and commissions, with the exception of expanding membership from three to five, and council approval of police and fire commission. Commissioners, we did not focus on the board and commission as such. We did focus on the procedures for creating and operating these entities. At the core of our reform is the notion that the primary role of boards and commissions is to represent the public interest. The revised charter establishes the rationale and underlying legal foundation for public service on boards and commissions. First of all, the charter, charter includes detailed explanations and standards as guide points for board and commission members to carry out the policy, advisory, and/or quasi-judicial or regulatory functions under its chart. Moreover, the charter makes it clear that members of boards and commissions are required to understand the role and scope of responsibility and be informed of the objectives, scope of responsibility, and the operating procedures of the board of commissions to which they are appointed. The salient point is that members should represent the public interest and not special interest groups and seek to render decisions on the basis of what is best for the residents of Norwalk. Furthermore, members should take care that deliberations include clue through uh, research and review of all alter- alternatives on an issue prior to making a recommendation. Finally, the proposed charter clarifies and finds the regulatory and policy or administrative functions of boards and commissions. The notion of conduct, conducting open meetings in the public may not seem novel or even necessary, but on the other hand, the pandemic changed the way the public attends public meetings and the expectation for public participation in the future. The proposed revised charter establishes an aspirational standard for Norwalk to lead the way to achieve optimal public accessibility at all meetings. To the end, the proposed revision mandates strict compliance with the requirements of the general statutes unless otherwise permitted or required by law, utilization of all technology provided by the city so that in-person, remote, or hybrid interactions may be offered to the public at every meeting wherever practicable. Continued migration toward ensuring that optimal technologies are achievable, are available to all boards and commissions to achieve the objective of public accessibility. The commission has proposed a significant overhaul of the requirements for the operation of boards and commissions to increase participation in the activities of the public bodies. Among the reforms in this proposed charter are the following: Compliance with minority party represent, representation statutes, public access, comment, and interaction, including, but not limited to, public speaking, comment, and any applicable rules and pro- protocols as may uh, enacted by ordinance or in the absence of an ordinance by the rules of the board or commission, and frequently or uh, of regular, uh, frequency of regular meetings of all boards, boards and commission in accordance with ordinance, or in the absence of an ordinance, the rules of the board or commission, and the mandatory attendance requirements with enforcement protocols. Consideration of appointments, um, designed to ensure that to the fullest extent possible, the composition of boards and commission reflect the diversity of the residents and the geographic areas of the city of Norwalk. The commission made no recommendation pertaining to the authority or composition of the Board of Assi- Estimate and Taxation. On the other hand, we do ma- mandate the following boards and commissions to be created by ordinance: The Board of Assessment Appeals, Conservation Commission, Food Service Pension Board, Board of Ethics, which is appointed by the council, Planning and Zoning Commission, the Pens- Pension Board, Zoning Board of Appeals, and the Public Library Board. Article Eight, with respect to city divisions and departments, the commissions made no substantial changes, because we believe it is best for the mayor and the common council to establish the administrative functions of a real-time basis to ensure flexibility for the delivery of services and compliance with applicable federal or state mandates or law. We engage in a reverse engineering function to lay out the current division and department heads. On the other hand, the proposed revised charter established clear authority to organize, to organize the government in compliance with the procedures and in conformity with the service functions that, um, delineated in the charter. The intent of our proposed, proposed revision is best stated in eight-one. The intent of the charter follows. I'm going to just take a water break. Uh, the mayor and the council, the ability to organize the government in order to achieve a balance of efficiency and service to the people of the city. A deal, delineation of department, departmental categories for the purpose of mandating services to be provided and functions to be fur- to be served. In essence, we recommend structures that may be altered pursuant to reorganization plan adopted in accordance with the provision of this charter. However, the powers, duties, and functions defined in this charter must be assigned to officials of the city. The goal is the creation of a government responsive to the needs of its res- residents, operating under a rule of law that is rigid enough to ensure that services are not ignored, however, flexible enough to find new and innovative delivery systems. The proposed revised charter spells out the appointment and confirmation functions of the mayor and common council with respect to the division chiefs, the CFOs, economic and community development, human resources, and personnel, operations and public works, and community service, as well as department heads or other executive-level appointees, which are controller, purchasing agent, tax collector, assistant tax collector, tax assessor, assistant tax assessor, health director, jeopardy, and assistant corporation councils on special councils, building off officials, director of code enforcement, library director, and municipal historian. The police and fire chiefs are also appointed by the respective department-based commissions. The only department mandated is the law department and the head of department, the corporation council. In all other cases, the ser- that serve are set forth by functions as well as the executive charge with the responsibility for those functions. Um, the function, executive departments, finance, chief financial officer, the controller, purchasing agent, tax collector, tax uh, assessor, economic uh, and, and community development, um, chief of C, um, economic committee development, business development and tourism, code enforcement, planning and zoning, transportation, mobility, and parking. The human resources, um, chief or human resources personnel, operation, chief operating officer, building, management, engineering, public works, recreation, and parks, under community service, chief, chief of community services, the health, health, public library, human services, the police department, the chief of police, and the fire department, the fire chief. There are no substantive changes to this provision with the exception of the reporting requirement addressing the issues of disclosing multi-year agreements and other responsibilities pertaining to the budget. The charter recognized the unique statutory protections and prerogatives afforded to the Board of Education with respect to its bud- budget appropriation and other duties and authority granted by state law. The revisions also articulate local fun- functions that pertain to all departments, including the Board of Education. Article Ten, as with other areas, there is no modification of the balance of power and authority granted the mayor, the board of estimate and taxation, and the common council in the budget process. The focus of the co- charter revision, uh, instead, focus instead on creating a budget provision that is linear and understandable, both from the public and the officials who are responsible for the government. We spent a lot of time in this section and uh, quite a bit of public input. The provision starts off with a coop- cooperative requirement for a city officials and employees involved in the budget process, including the Board of Education. The charter also defines the operation and capital, the operation, operating and capital budgets. The capital budget is also included in the charter for the first time. The commission took the ordinance-based process and moved it into the charter. There are a number of new provisions that don't change the process with one exception. However, establish a framer for the development of the budget. The proposed revised charter is a public record subject to public inspection and public engagement. Under the recommendation, the mayor, common council, board of estimate and taxation, board of education, and planning and zoning commission must develop and publicize procedures designed to encourage public participation in the budget process. The common council has the legislative authority to enact ordinances to implement these provisions of the charter. This is facilitated by two new requirements, and they are initial joint public hearings. Honor before October first. These joint hearings are held for the purpose of eliciting comments and ideas from members of the public prior to the development of the operating and capital budgets for the subsequent fiscal year. The joint hearings are conducted by a mayor, chief financial officer, president of the common council, chair of the council committee authorized to review the budget, chair pro tempore of the board of education, chair of the planning and zoning commission, and a member if the board of estimate designated by the mayor. And the second is publication of a budget calendar, not later than October fifteenth. The chief financial officer is required to publish a public uh a budget calendar, including procedural rules in order to inform the public of the significant milestones in the budget process. The remainder of the article walks the reader through the linear operating and capital budget processes. Article eleven, under provision, there is a required review of the charter within two years, and this is uh and every five years thereafter. The short term review allows the city to look at structures, procedures, and operational issues that were not reviewed by the twenty twenty three Charter Revision Commission, miscellaneous and 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 uh and that we had recommended. We might want to really talk about that section uh as we get into a discussion. Uh, article twelve, this article includes historical taxing districts. As we have stated, these provisions were not touched with the exception of gender neutrality and capitalization of defined terms that apply to the entire chat chat um uh charter. On its title page, part two includes the following statement. Part two of this charter recodifies all of the current charter provisions pertaining to the first, second, third, and sixth taxing districts. The first, second, third, and sixth taxing districts is defined in two dash two B above and is further set forth in articles twelve of part two of this charter are quasi municipal municipal cooperations, bodies, politic, or political subdivisions of the state. The first, second, and third taxing districts are funded through their respective utility revenues and thereby involves no separate district tracks. While the sixth taxing district levies a tax for the services it provides for its parks and beaches, government selection, library, and fire service. The twenty twenty three charter revision did not embark on any changes in the provision of this charter other than some minor edits, including the effort to engage in gender neutrality, capitalization of defined terms, and placement of revisions that were in the body of the charter and were aptly placed in the provisions dealing with the taxing districts. The commission believes that part two should be thoroughly reviewed by the governing bodies of the taxing districts. As the reader can see by reviewing the annotations, the commission itself did not make any changes other than gender uh uh in this and in the capitalization in this section of the charter. We will retain the internal references to the charter and effect prior to the effective date of twenty twenty three revisions year and after referred to as the prior charter. The provisions of the prior charter are referenced in the end notes. We respectfully would suggest that the leaders of the first, second, third, and sixth taxing districts review review these provisions to examine whether it would be worthwhile to include changes in the two year review mandated by the proposed revised charter. They need to do this carefully in order to preserve the integrity of this special act authority. However, the commission is of the belief that there are many provisions that no longer serve any purpose. Um, article thirteen and fourteen, the historical provisions in these articles are left intact because the commission could not decide what to do with them, and there was no rationale for repeal. On the other hand, there are provisions such as the council districts that will be replaced by new new districts following reapportionment and the functions of certain department officials whose functions are better left to the ordinance. We look forward to our workshop over the course of the next two weeks, and we feel free to call on us uh council uh with any thoughts you may have. So the rest of it uh several pages are all of the uh references uh that we have alluded to. Uh, Steve, you wanna jump in?
Thank you, Madam Chair. That was uh up there with Fidel Castro's longest speeches. And I think you deserve a lot of credit for the stamina and the presentation. Thank you. It's been an honor.
I hung in there.
An honor working with Patsy.
And they stayed away.
It's been great. And I'll defer to the other members of the commission here or on on the screens if they want to say a few things, but there's a couple of points I wanted to make if I may, and then we'll be happy to answer questions, and we look forward to um the workshops as we get into it. Can I just say one thing about the workshops, Mr. President, if I may? That um what I would suggest is um as you start looking through this document, um and you think about the things that are priorities for you, I think you should let the president know what they are so that as we go through the workshops, we can have some sense of what it is that you want to talk about at those workshops. And we'll be be happy to provide you any backup materials that we have that we developed as we were going through this charter. So it'll be useful to know in advance. I'd rather have the materials before than to say, I'll get the materials uh that you're asking about. So it'll be useful as you have issues, get them to the president, the president will let Patsy and myself know uh what those are, and we'll be prepared to deal with the workshops in a uh in a prudent manner. I wanted to, I couldn't stick you here. Why did I do that? I wanted to talk about the multi year agreement provision in article nine. Just briefly, in this room, we had a meeting with uh council for the Board of Education and many members of the Board of Education because we thought it was important to, I I've proposed these in many of the charters I've dealt with around the state. Um, you want to make sure that while you don't have line authority for boards of education, uh the city just approves the educational appropriation under ten dash two twenty two. The important issue for you and for the board of estimate and for the mayor is to know what they're doing um and to know that they're doing things in a legal way because there's plenty of case law while they have their independent jurisdiction. There's plenty of case law that makes it clear that they have local functions as well as state functions. And under those local functions complying with budget requirements, dealing with procurement, dealing with a whole range of other activities, they, like any other department of the city, have to comply with those activities. And what we did is we narrowed in on the multi year um agreements. Multi year agreements is a trouble spot I have found throughout the state with boards of education because what they end up doing is end up signing one year deals with options, with options to renew, with extension agreements. Those are not one year contracts. Those are multi year agreements. Um, what uh in a in a in a place where there's a good balance between the board of education and um the general government, they tend to come to the council, mayor and the council for multi year uh agreement procurements uh and to get the approval up the approval upfront for the multi year procurement. And they then have the authority to enter into the multi year contract. But it's important for the general government to know what the board of education is doing on a multi but multi multi year basis. One of the bases of the uh case city of New Haven versus New Haven Board of Education, which made it clear the capital budgets are city budgets, not board of education budgets. It's one that I uh was involved when I chaired the finance committee of the board of Alders when they sued us, and I was corporation counsel when we won at the Supreme Court. Uh, it's a very, very important principle, and it's just a real strong accountability standard. Um, the second point I wanted to make in here is that we have in in the um throughout the document, you're gonna see what we call cooperation clauses. And the idea of the cooperation clause, it's not that it gives you, you know, a draconian authority to say that you have to do this or to subpoena somebody and say you're not complying with uh with cooperation, but it's to establish a constitutional standard and a leverage point so that all the branches of government, the mayor works with the council, the council works with the mayor, all of you work with the board of estimate, you work with the board of education, and all the departments work with the elected officials who were responsible for governing the um the community, and that's um one of the points I wanted to make on cooperation. We had one in the board of education section which they thought was targeting them. We ended up not going forward with the cooperation clause there because they're a department like any other department. They're covered by the general provisions of the charter, and we made that clear that it was not intended for them, uh but that they are covered by it. And so I wanted to point that out uh as well. The um next point was a point that Patsy thought we should come back to. I hope you don't mind. And this is the rationale for the two year charter revision. This this commission's done two things. Uh, most, most uh communities have a ten year requirement that you have to do a charter revision every ten years. Uh, this commission, not with my advice, uh but it's not a bad idea. This commission came in with a five year requirement that every five years, this will be after the two year cycle that you have coming up in two years if this is approved. Um, that you should look at your charter. You may have nothing to do in in a five year cycle. Um, and um I also think you should be looking at your ordinances on a fairly regular basis as well, but but is with with the charter, you shouldn't go too long. You shouldn't wait uh hundred and ten years to do a comprehensive revision of your charter, but hopefully you won't need another comprehensive revision of this charter. Um, the the idea of this charter was to give you a um a document that you could look at, understand what you have, and then try to figure out where you want to go uh with your with your local government. And so there will be mandated within two years a charter revision. My recommendation to those of you on the council and those of you who are going to be returning next year is that you begin, not that you convene a charter commission immediately, but you start thinking and working with the mayor and start thinking about what it is you want to address. What are the issues that need to be tackled that haven't been tackled? And start doing it in the same way a charter commission may be doing it, whether you set up a select committee uh or a combined committee of executive and legislative uh and board of estimate members. However you do it is up to you, but you still, you need to think about those things, and you need to bring uh the kind of support system that you have that has worked with this commission because if you just give it to a charter commission, they're not gonna have time. Even if you give them the full fifteen months, they don't have time uh to do the analysis and to build the consensus. That's the important thing is that if you're gonna make a change, any change in the structure of government, size of the legislative body, uh the composition of the legislative body, the relationship between the mayor and the legislative body, um the relationship with the board of estimate. Um, the all those things require some thought. Uh, they require um a recognition of the culture of your community, the folk waves of your community. And so you just can't give it to a charter commission. You really need to think about it, and you really need to establish the foundation for those changes. So I wanted to explain the two year, and and you know, one of the issues that propelled us was the issue about uh the compensation for the council. We think that's an issue that should be addressed. Um, but it probably should be addressed in the in the in the in the context of the overall um revision of the uh the structure of government. Um, the last point I wanna make, I think, is um the articles, articles twelve and thirteen, uh thirteen and fourteen of the charter, the historical provisions. I I ask that you take a look at those provisions. You you folks uh work with the document, you work in the government, you work. Um, you have former member of the board of estimate on this body. Uh, I think, is there a former member of the board of education on this body as well? Maybe there is or isn't. Uh, the mayor I know is on the board of education. Um, I think you should look at those sections because those are sections of of the charter that we couldn't quite figure out what to do with. And if you have some thoughts on that and ideas on that, because that's not the final word. If they should be repealed, you should recommend that they should be repealed. Take a look at those sections. Um, the other part of article fourteen are the, I was calling them the sunset provisions, but they're not really sunset provisions. They're gonna be transition provisions where we have um kind of the job descriptions for some of the department heads. We believe that those should be moved into the code of ordinance. We're doing that in New Haven, literally as we speak, meeting with all the department heads or half the department heads tomorrow. And and the the objective is in New Haven, you have Eisenhower era. Does anybody know who Eisenhower is? Eisenhower era um qualification standards for department heads in the Biden era, you know, in the twenty fifth century. And so we we are moving them out and having them adopted on uh by ordinance. But we have standards in the charter so that they have to be uh in accordance with best practices in the field. Uh, and so and they have to be done with the procurement officer in the in the in the city. And so uh those types of things need to be looked at, and I just want to give you the rationale for that that section of the charter. That's it for me on uh affirmative statements. Do any of the other members want to say anything? Okay, thank you. Happy to answer any question.
Any questions?
Yes. Uh, who shall I ask a question?
Yeah, ask the question. We'll figure out if we'll answer it.
So so I think there was a mention that the that the capital budget process was uh previously in the in ordinance and was removed and now is placed in the charter. Uh, what was the rationale for that?
Steve?
Happy to do that. One of the first things I did in government when I was a little boy in in New Haven, I was elected to the board. There was no capital budget process in our charter or even in the order, even in the ordinances. And one of the first things I did was write a capital budget ordinance back in nineteen eighty two or eighty three. There was no capital budget process in your charter. Uh, I recommended that you do establish it in the charter. You can take a look at it. If you think it's too um detailed, we can scale it back and move some things back to the code of ordinances. Uh, but I think that the capital budget process is as important as the operating budget side, and I thought that both sides needed to be balanced in in the charter. And you know, as a former member of the board of estimate, more than happy to hear your advice and counsel on uh on both sides of the budget, whether we've been too detailed on either side. Uh, what I want to make sure is that your charter is detailed enough so that the bodies that operate under the charter, your former body and your current body uh have guidance and and direction and that the public is protected uh by those guardrails, but not too detailed to to lead to a quagmire. So that's what I'd ask you to look at there. So it's not written stone, but the concept was to make sure that the capital budget was uh placed in the charter.
And and I on this point too, there were a lot of comments of people uh not understanding the process and the timing of it. And and having attended many capital budget hearings through the years, I understand that frustration. And our goal, one of our major goals was to make the charter as user friendly as possible so that our constituents understand how we function and can participate in the process. That was the rationale.
I've got a series of like maybe four questions or if you want to go wrong, Robin, or I could just ask all four now.
Uh, let's see. Does anyone else have any immediate questions? Hearing seen and done. Uh, could you explain what the cooperation clauses are and what they mean? What they, what they, you know, what's the, what's the the functional result of them?
Yeah, what I have found, the way they've been used in the communities that have adopted them over the years is that um it gives um a member of the legislative bodies. Most legislative bodies do not have um subpoena authority. The it's just something they should have, but they do not have. And um and so the cooperation clause gives a legislative body, gives a body like the board of estimate. Um, some something to point to in the charter that gives them the authority to say, look, we have to work together on these matters. That's one aspect of it. The other aspect of it is if you're on a board or commission, you're sitting on the planning board, you're sitting on the zoning board, you're sitting on the police commission, whatever it may be. Um, the the cooperation clauses are very specific that if you are dealing with a department, if the department's dealing with the commission, the commission with the department, you work together. Doesn't mean you agree with everything. You can vote everything down that the chief comes up with uh that you have, you know, a responsibility to deal with. But everybody needs to cooperate. And so it's it's a broad, I don't want to call it a kumbaya clause. It's not a kumbaya clause because I think it does uh merit um some serious uh um you serious compliance. I think it does. It is something you can ask people to comply with. I don't think we have any penalties for non compliance with the cooperation clause. Maybe it's something to look at um uh in that regard, although, you know, discipline for elected officials and discipline for um appointed officials, uh some are governed by collective bargaining agreement or Um, appointed officials, uh, some are governed by collective bargaining agreement or by other provisions of the charter, but the idea is to provide some level of suasion. Uh, and leverage for the entities involved. That's the intent. And for the members of the public to say, look, your your charter says you're supposed to cooperate. Why can't you just get the information from one department to the commission, so that's the the last element of it.
Okay, thanks, um, the uh. There's a five-year review of the charter in the charter and then, but there's an initial two-year review, what's the purpose of the initial? Two-year review uh, as compared to the the ongoing and five-year reviews?
There were a number of issues, uh, which I think the chair talked about.
And we didn't, didn't address and, you know, wanted to, but there wasn't enough time and energy or to do that.
It went beyond scope, I think we were trying, I mean, well, look, I'm gonna tell you, we did things in this charter, so I don't want you to think it's an anodyne document. Uh, but in terms of big structural issues, we didn't address. The role of the mayor versus the council, the role of the council on the budget versus the board of estimate, those issues were not addressed here at all. Um, we just didn't have time because you had, we, the the, when, for my first meetings with with uh, your former president. And uh, with the mayor, um, uh, over a year ago, it was evident that the real heavy lift was fixing the document. So that you as governing, as a governing body, you'd have a document you could work with. Uh, starting to tackle all those other issues was really, really difficult. The commission came up with this notion that you should have um, a uh, an early charter revision. At least in two years, but as I indicated a moment ago, I think you need to do some due diligence before that occurs. So I think you should use the good part of the next two years to figure out what you wanna do, which means you need to hit the ground running after the election. Uh, to begin to think about what it is you're doing, you may even hit the ground running before this is adopted, uh, but. You know, I would hope that you would all be hitting the ground to get it adopted in November, uh, is is the first priority is to get this charter approved. But uh, that was the, that was the theory of the two-year review, so we can look at these things.
One last question, you, I believe you moved some items or at least one item that I that you mentioned, I don't remember which one, but you moved. Uh, at least one item from uh, the charter to ordinance. Uh, and my question is uh. The issue of council uh, compensation of of the compensation for for council members, that was not moved to ordinance. Uh, presumably that's left for the next two years to evaluate and to determine whether or not we should go into ordinance?
Well, here's a law on council compensation, and it's a law that I don't understand as a former member of a legislative, local legislative body, why local legislative bodies are are um. Left out of the the loop, especially in Norwalk with a local legislative body does has no line item authority in the in in the budget, it it makes absolutely no sense. Where you have a a legislative body that doesn't control its budget. Um, and that is all legislative bodies in the state of Connecticut. Uh, if you raise the money, if you, if if the mayor were to propose an increase in compensation. And the board of estimate were to go along with it and the council uh, sets the cap, doesn't play much of a role in terms of. Uh, eliminating those lines, if that's in the budget and it's approved and signed by the mayor. That provision of the budget has to go to referendum by state law. Uh, it it it's nonsensical, it makes it it, uh, it it it, when I, when I saw the law, I was absolutely astonished by it, I was an alder at the time. And it's it's existed all these years. And the reason I end up addressing compensation for um, uh, legislative body members in a charter. Is if you establish the baseline in the charter. And it's approved at referendum with the whole charter. Then you don't have to go back, if you have a cost of living adjustment. And the voters have approved the cost of living adjustment, when that cost of living adjustment is adjusted. It's done in accordance with the action of the voters that approve the cost of living adjustment. No one has challenged that, I've done that since the early part of the twenty-first century, starting in Hartford and Waterbury. Um, and it's never been challenged uh, in in uh, in any, in any system because it was passed by referendum. I think it would be very, I'd be very surprised if the court would uh, would uh, reverse that, but that's the reason I try to address the charters. Um, and again, it's an issue, this is before you know, an issue you're gonna be looking at and you'll have to make a determination on it. Um, but uh, you have that ability right now to raise compensation, but would have to be on the ballot.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir, I see.
Yes.
Um, thank you, uh, President Burnett, um, and. Huge thanks to the Charter Revision Commission, this is tremendous document, this is a tremendous amount of work, uh. I can't believe just how much more readable it is even going through it, um, and I have about a thousand small questions, but I will obviously save those for the workshops. Um, I did just wanna ask, uh. You have recommended the elimination of the board of selectmen and the treasurer. But not some of the other positions, I think the sheriff and constables and some other things that have come up in the past as. Um, positions potentially to eliminate, so I just wondered if you could speak briefly to the decision-making.
Yeah, we, we did have a a public meeting with uh, all of those people, we're all invited. And uh, most of the selectmen said there's no function, that's a a hangover from from being a town. And not a city, and so they have no function and they do, and they they suggested that we eliminate it. Uh, and um, the constables uh, came and they functioned and it was important that we maintain that. Um, the treasurer uh, is basically has no function and didn't come to speak to us, uh, all. Uh, although it was invited. And the last one is sheriff. And uh, I think we put in that that would end. Um, in um, twenty twenty-five. I, I'm, I'm not sure, I, uh.
Sheriff continues along with the uh.
Uh, well, we we discussed that, um, and uh, but the sheriff did send a meet, a public meeting. And uh, asked that it be continued, and so we did.
There were functions, I think, that was determined, there are sheriff functions that are unique.
Or like the constable, it was equal to the. And you know, maybe we reduced how many constables, that was something we talked about at length. Because there're prac, there's a practical piece to that in that. The amount of uh, lines that on the ballot requires that you turn the ballot over. And so if there were fewer constables. You would not have to turn the ballot over to vote, so that might be something that you look at.
So those positions will be on the ballot this November, because charter's on the ballot this November, so they will have one more, one more term in office.
Thank you very much, I very much look forward to working with all of you um, on all of this um, really terrific work, and I really appreciate the time.
Councilmember Josh Goldstein?
Thank you, President Burnett, um. I second what all my colleagues say, with the unbelievable amount of work and. We're just getting into it, just a couple of things, I saw that there are a lot of. I think there's a page where it's specifically on page nine of the transmittal letter where you discuss how. Number of boards of commissions have to be created by ordinance, um, as a result of essentially being transferred from the charter to the ordinance. Having been on the ordinance committee and how, plus having been involved with ordinances, and I'm looking at my friend Tom Levinson over there, ordinances take a lot of time. Um, and this is a lot, I mean, this is eight, and that's probably not even the full scope of it. I guess, first of all, what happens to, you know, if assuming the charter is adopted, does that mean that the planning and zoning commission, for example. Legally ceases to exist until we create an ordinance, or is there a mechanism to keep it going until?
Yep, Steve, uh, you asked.
I think most of those are by ordinance already, I I I will look at that again.
That might be a typo.
No, 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 no. What, the the concept of it, um, council member, is um, that. I think they're already ordinances, I mean, they're not moving out of the charter, and a lot of my charters, the way we do it is that they're actually in the charter. You move them out of the charter uh, gradually, so you basically leave the charter authority there. And you establish a transition provision by which time the the council has to approve the ordinance, I think these are already there. What we are trying to establish in the charter is that these are necessary commissions and they should remain in uh, existence. Um, by ordinance, I do believe most of them, I'll I'll double check it, but I believe most of them are adopted by ordinance already.
I also would, just had a question about, there's a couple of notes about public participation and a desire. Or that there's a, that um. I think it was that in various boards of commissions that are designed to increase part of public participation. Can you just explain a little bit about sort of what mechanisms there are to increase it, and I'm not sure by, what does increase mean?
Uh, there were a lot of comments from the public on uh, uh, not, not uh. Having noticed soon enough of meetings and uh, confusion on dates and timings and and the website and. That kind of issue came up. And so uh, that's part of the articulation that we need to, we felt we need to really focus on that, and our goal. Our goal for all of us was to uh, be more as as inclusive as possible for the public. Um, that we felt that was an important thing to articulate.
Thank you, um.
It we, it's a relatively light touch in this charter.
Okay.
Uh, we addressed the issues of diversity. Uh, but again, a fairly light touch there, in a lot of other charters, there are very serious recruitment provisions. Real mandates for the mayor and the town clerk, uh, the city and town clerk, or the city clerk and the town clerk, you have the two uh, positions here. Uh, to aggressively go out and recruit people to get some, get on boards of commissions, but here we are just trying to establish the rules of the road. What does it mean to be on a quasi-regulatory body? Uh, what does it mean to be on a a a body that's attached to a department, so we define those things more carefully in here to uh. Allow members of the public to see what it is they'll be doing if they get on. But it's a fairly light touch, and and we did, a lot of the provisions are in the notice sections that really lay out. The quality of notice, um, so and 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 also public comment provisions and things like that. To encourage public participation at meetings, if not being on a board, but as a member of the public appearing before a board.
I appreciate that, and I have one more. Which is about the four-year mayoral term. It's, obviously, I mean, we've talked about controversial items versus non-controversial items, but. There are, if I'm not mistaken, there are many municipalities, especially municipalities of Norwalk's size or bigger. That have four-year mayoral terms, I guess my question is. Are we, you know, in your research and determination, did you find that Norwalk's two-year term is sort of out of step? Um, with with other cities, sort of how, how does Norwalk?
We had, we had a a meeting dedicated to just that and uh, a council invited three. People from, uh, I forgot all the cities that they were from, from New, uh, Hampden, Steve.
I don't remember, it was Hampden, Hampden, Danbury, uh, Waterbury was there.
Bridgeport, Stanford.
No, not Bridgeport.
Wasn't Bridgeport and Stanford, but it was uh, New Haven, I think was as well.
Uh, and we discussed that concept.
That's a two-year term.
Yeah.
That's correct.
Hartford, Des Moines.
Hartford is for, Waterbury has for.
And Waterbury is too, I believe.
Waterbury, oh.
Waterbury is two, Stanford's four, that was where Neil O'Leary is, right?
Yeah, I think it's four for mayor, two for board.
No, I'm saying that's where Neil O'Leary is, uh, it's two.
The, um.
And I think, I think Waterbury is two, but I'm not sure.
Well, yeah, I'll take a look.
Yeah, but the uh, the commission and 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 the commissioners that are present can also address it, but we were all uh, in favor. Of a four-year term, uh, the question came up at the end, pretty much end of our work of of. Uh, will that impact the uh, passage of the whole charter? And and so there was a recommendation to move it out to two hundred, twenty twenty-seven. So that this charter would pass because um, we felt it was very important to get the charter passed. But the the uh, um, comments and consideration was that it was important to go to a four-year term. Uh, and that we are a a large business that we run, basically, a public business. And to uh, uh, plan any major uh, construction, I've been in the construction building business for fifty years and I know. What it takes to get any project, you know, conceptualized, uh, impacted, budgeted and executed. It it takes him, it takes a lot longer than two years, so that we felt we wanna move in that direction. But there was concern, several, there were pros and cons from the public as well, there were people supporting it and people not supporting it.
Thank you.
So if I may, I'm uh, our commissioner, uh, Watford, Raleigh Watford, uh, just gave me the uh. Document I gave them, and I will get it out to you as well, which lays out the the standard, New Britain has a two. Year term for mayor, Norwalk is a two-year term for mayor, West Hartford's two years, and West Hartford's a council manager form of government. Um, Fairfield, um, which is a little smaller than you, but not that much, uh, it's a board of selectmen. But their first selectwoman, uh, and the the board of select has a four-year term, a Hampden. Is moving to a four-year term, uh, we made a, they made a judgment, I was their counsel. Uh, we did eleven years ago and uh, we backed off from the four-year term because we thought it was a politically a difficult issue. Uh, ten years later, and then eleven years later, because they had a failed charter in there. Um, they put it, they they even put it as a separate question, they just went with it, but what they did was they um, staggered it. So that the mayor, who was mayor at the time of the adoption, they could not accuse us of creating something that was beneficial to the incumbent mayor. So they did it two years in the future. Uh, in this case, this commission went four years in the in the future. Um, so Hampden is moving to four years, Bridgeport has four years. Stanford has four years, Waterbury does have four years mayor.
You do.
Mayor, two years for the board of alders. Um, which is normally the way I recommend it, Danbury's still a two years, New Haven is a two, but I can tell you, I'll be there Wednesday night. They are now moving to another four-year term in New Haven, um, and uh, Hartford has four. Renish has two, so that's, and I'll make sure you get this document.
Councilmember Davis. Thank you, uh, President Burnett, um, first off, like, many of my colleagues have said, thank you, uh, commissioners, uh. Council for the work that you guys have done, this is fantastic, I'm looking forward to diving into it, to the workshop of uh. That we're gonna have and discussing this. At more in depth, um, the, the, and just a note, I think the National League of Cities, I think it's forty-five percent of. The cities in the United States now are at a four-year term. And I think there's thirty, it's in the thirties for a two-year term, so I I I do support this and. I like sort of the 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 way you've styled it and the work that you've done on it and listening to the public on it. Um, a couple little things, and it it this is not, I I have a question about the. The the change of office to January first. And then I'm reading in the budget now that we're we're using hard dates, not the first meeting after the third moon of the. The side, whatever, that we have a meeting, so. It says that the mayor would be presenting the budget to the council on the twenty-second, and on the twenty-eighth, the council's voting. On a appropriations cap, if I'm reading that correctly in there. Now, that with a January first start date of a new administration, I think is is pushing that process up. Quite a bit, and I I'm I'm curious to know what the rationale was, what the thinking was on those dates uh, pushed up then.
Well, I will say this, two things, one, uh, that the, there's a, the other thing we have is a transition office. Part of the concept of the transition office is not only to provide an office for the incoming mayor, if there is a new mayor, if there's, if there's the incumbent mayor, re-elected. No need for a transition office, except there's still a need for transition, once we change that date for members of the council and boards of education. And we're very specific in the document to make sure that members elect. Get all the budget information from the time of their election to the time of their inauguration, so that two-month period, they're not without information. Uh, and there are no actions really taken by the council in November and December. Um, that are interrupted by the delay in the commencement of the office, we should take a look, uh, I'll be candid with you. Um, we'd like to think we thought of everything, we did the budget provisions in March. The concept of the transition came in April or May, and so we should sit down with you as a council. Uh, probably with the CFO and the mayor and others to take a look at those dates and see if those dates need to be real.
I think it warrants visiting.
Yeah, that's, yeah, I'm being honest with you that.
I mean, yeah, we're gonna be in a workshop and have these discussions, it's one, it's something that in my first initial, you know. Blowing through this.
Sounds very.
Quickly, those dates stuck out to me.
Very.
Know that my experience in four years of of doing this has been that. That period of time can be, um, you know, can be a little bit of troubled water, so.
No, I I think that's absolutely uh, merited, and I'll point out one other thing that maybe a lot of people don't know. Back in two thousand eighteen, Speaker Ritter, um, I never talked about why he did this, but it's a very ingenious concept. Back in two thousand eighteen, Speaker Ritter, um, I never talked about why he did this, but it's a very ingenious concept. Uh, got legislation through that allows legislative bodies. To alter their charter without going through a charter revision process to deal with the dates of the budget process. So you have the ability, if these dates do not work, and let's try to fix them to make sure. That we have dates that everybody has a consensus on that will work. But if those states don't work, if we go through and realign the dates, uh, in, 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 uh, to change the current dates. You do have a safety valve and that is a two thirds vote to change your charter provisions for that purpose only, changing the dates in your charter. You can't change the structure, you can't come in, uh, the eleventh hour with the support of the mayor and get rid of the board of estimate. Uh, but you can change the dates that things have to get done. Um, otherwise, if you want to get rid of the board of estimate, you need to go through a full, full charter revision a- again. But, but, uh, it's a very interesting process and it came in this pre pandemic, which is interesting. Uh, because it's the kind of thing you would have thought about during the pandemic. In fact, that's when I found out about it really, when I was, uh, advising the governor on executive orders. We, we realized you can actually change the dates. With a two thirds vote of your council and, and, and not run into problems. This is before all of this technology was really in place. That's a great concept.
One other, uh, question that I have is the, your article fourteen, sort of those, these, uh. Stragglers have got pushed to their, to their, you mentioned in there that, that they, they need to be addressed. And either by ordinance or, you know, and then that ordinance becomes force of law and they come out of charter at that point. But is there a timeframe, is there a, is there a trigger element on them to actually clean them up, is there?
I'd be happy to talk to you about that. I will give you, I like triggers, didn't put one in here. Um, if you think that this legislative body has the discipline to live with the trigger, I'm really happy to work with you on developing a trigger. I won't name the community, uh, it's a community I know quite well. Uh, we're ten, eleven years ago, we put a trigger in their provision to rename all of the department heads or to, 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 uh, move all the qualification standards. To ordinance, not done. Uh, and I've been talking for the last six, seven years, I said, let's not get to charter revision and have this provision still in there, it is still in there. We now have a resolution to get it done. I think triggers are great, I just hope legislative bodies abide by them, so.
I guess my, my, my fear rests in the fact that we're dealing with a document from nineteen thirteen right now, which has pushed us to. Do this and, you know, do we end up in another situation a hundred and some years from now where these things are still floating around?
I, I agree completely. I think.
That's probably why we're suggesting a charter revision every five years so that it's enforced. You know, review. To, to deal with those kind of things that, you know, times change, world changes, so.
All right. Well, again, thank you very much for the work that you guys have put into this. I look forward to, uh, robust conversations moving forward.
Thanks for observations.
Someone has a hand.
No, I don't know, I'm, I'm just saying.
I, I did have one question on, on page six of the transmittal. Well, you, you allude to, um, the, the, uh, item of the four year term for mayor to be as a. A separate question on the ballot. Um, were there any other items that might have rose to the level of discussion? Or consideration to be a separate ballot question?
I'll defer to past year and the members, um, I can't think of any, but I'll defer to the members. There are any other.
Not specifically with that, that concept, uh, that I recall. You folks. Well, the common, the, the salary, uh, the other issues were. We go to a four year term for mayor, do we do four years for the council? At the same time, we spent a lot of time talking about that. Um, uh, and our decision was that, that we felt staying with two years for the council at this time was sort of a. A potential referendum, um, uh, on the, on the mayor's position. If people were uncomfortable, it was sort of a safety valve. Um, so that is why we went in that direction for that.
Ten questions. On the two year term for council, how would it be structured, the election process, the four year term for mayor?
No, we got it, that became sticky.
Pardon me?
That became sticky of how you do that, yeah.
Because you don't want to have a, an election cycle where, you know, two thousand people could.
Right. And, and, yeah, and you have them, um. We talked in terms of staggering it and, and to that point.
I did notice a little bit of a, uh, in here, it said, uh, that the, um. The, uh, mayor's term takes place one week after the election, it's two, two weeks.
I'm sorry, uh, that was.
Two weeks after the election.
Okay.
So you have Tuesday election, then two weeks later on a Tuesday, you have your organization.
Per city the size is, is awfully difficult, uh, and that was one of the other reasons that we looked at the transition provision. Uh, just talking about the, um, the two year, four year, uh, conundrum. Uh, Hampden has decided to go in that direction, Waterbury has gone in that direction. There's a considerable tail off, there's no doubt mayor, you're absolutely right, in the election where the mayor is not running. Uh, Hartford, um, Hartford, uh, moved in this direction, uh, not with the council, but with the board of education. Uh, having a board of education cycle that was off cycle with the, uh, remainder of the city officials and the theory in two thousand two, when they did this. Was, oh, this would be great, and all these people would focus on the board of education. Most important function, it would be, uh, you know, be the glory days, gladiators out in the streets, trying to make sure they get board of education members. They were lucky to get three thousand voters, four thousand voters, six thousand voters. So twenty years later, they've now moved it back into, uh, one cycle with the, uh, council. And we, we have to do a stagger to get the, uh, to make it work, but it's gonna go back into the one cycle. Uh, we have talked about having, um. You know, having the alternate election, the concept of having the council in a separate election cycle, um. Uh, lends itself to the notion that the council is a legislative body, is an independent body. Um, and, and, um, and, and should be, uh. You know, separated from the top of the ticket, the mayor, the city, the town clerk in this town. Uh, and the other, uh, officials that remain, um, but, um, it's really a, a local call and, and, uh, but we didn't address the, the term for council in this, in this cycle.
Any other questions at this time?
Can I explain a couple of procedural things?
Yes.
No, except sub- substantive questions, I just want to talk about where we are. I'm gonna repeat something that, uh, at least one of the members wasn't here when I spoke to you a year and a half ago or so. So where we are right now is in the process where it's before you, you, it's your document. And you have two choices. Um, we have a schedule, it's laid out, the schedule's aggressive, the schedule's not giving you all the statutory time. You gave this commission, uh, a, an awful lot of time to, uh, deal with the, um, the issue of, uh. Of, of dealing with this, this charter, which is a big, big task. It's the big, one of the biggest tasks I've assumed as a lawyer working on charters. Um, but your job now is to make a decision whether there are any recommendations to come back to the commission. If that's what you decide, um, then at some point in this process, we have the date, I think we have the, the dates laid out. You will send a series of recommendations back to the commission for their consideration. At that point, if that's what happens, uh, they can only deal with those issues. If Abraham Lincoln came back from the dead and came up with the greatest idea, uh, we could not honor Mr. Lincoln. Uh, at that moment, you were limited to the recommendations that you make at that point. When they send it back to you in the end, you are then, um, confined to making up or down decisions on either the whole package. Or parts of the package. So you can vote against portions of the package, uh, that will be before you, which includes all the elements that are here tonight. Plus whatever elements, uh, occur as a result of the dialogue between the two bodies. Um, the first thing that will happen when it comes back, if it comes back. Uh, will be a reverse meeting, you'll come to a meeting of the commission. And confer with the commission and tell us why you think we need to do A, B, C, D, or E, whatever that may be. If, on the other hand, uh, oh, and then we get, let me just take it out to the end of the process. Then it comes back to you, you make your decision, up or down, total in totality, up and down in whole or in part, in part. Um, and then you will approve final report of the commission, that's what they will submit to you. This is specifically called the draft report. And so it's not finalized until either then. And then when, if you approve it, you then have to approve the questions. That's why we said we didn't want to be presumptuous when the chair, uh, asked you to consider, uh, the separate question for the four year term. Uh, but it's not a commission decision, that's a, uh, a, a council decision. Uh, on what the questions will be on the ballot. And I'll work with you to help develop them, uh, and, and look at different models from around the state to develop the best questions possible. And, and once that's done in August, sometime in August. And those questions will go to the town clerk and then to the secretary of state and they'll go on the ballot in November. And the only other thing that you, we would do is the town clerk, uh, has the statutory authority to prepare, uh, we have to publish it in the newspaper. Uh, we have that newspaper requirement, but we, we have the ability to do what they call a, uh, a, an explanatory text. Where the city is able to pay for a document that kind of goes through and in an anodyne way, in a neutral way. All the provisions and what you've done to change the charter. Back to where we are right now. If at the end of your deliberations now, where we are today, in the next few weeks. You say, ah, we could do this, we could do that, but we think generally it's a good document, uh, we don't want to make any changes. Um, that would convert it into, if you do not make recommendations during that period of time, it converts into a final report. You take final action within this timeframe. Um, the likelihood is, and I've said this to the commission, I'm saying this to you, there will be things we need to talk about. We just talked about the dates for the budget. Um, so there are a number of things we will be talking about, I do not anticipate that this is the final report. I do anticipate you'll be deliberating, reviewing, uh, the members will be available. I guess we'll be doing a lot of this on Zoom, we'll be all available, working on Zoom. And as I said before, I just tell the president what we, what you guys want to address at the next meeting, he'll make some decisions about how we. Conduct the meetings and we'll get you whatever background materials that I provided to the commission, including the one on the, uh, the terms of office. Any other materials that we have, we'll make sure you have for those discussions.
A quick, just one last question, maybe?
Yes, council member, it come on to.
Have you, just out of curiosity, um. Do you have a word count as to like how many words that the, uh, charter has been condensed to, like, like how many? What the size of it now is compared to?
I can do that. I haven't done that, be afraid to look at it. I don't have it, but I can.
Well, the computer can do it just by.
Yeah, my computer is a phone.
But, but I mean, can you?
I'm happy to do that.
In inches.
It's sizable.
Yeah, I, look, there, there are things that are gonna be taken out. I think that the body, the, the way I can look at it, you have to look at part one. Uh, and it's gonna be hard, we'll have to do the whole thing because the problem with your charter, and I, I, I was just looking at my presentation I made to you guys a long time ago. Um, and I just talked about the, uh, I just had it here, I just pulled it up, because I was, I was, uh, gonna comment on it, but it was. Super sillious, but I'll, I'll do it now, that's a super sillious, the, um. It's that, the, the council alone was dealt with in article four, article fifteen. And in a, a, a variety of other places in the charter, so there was not one section where you could look at the council powers. And say, that's where the council powers are. Same thing was true with the mayor was, uh, in a couple of different articles, the budget was all over the place. Parts of the budget were the port of estimate, parts of the budget were the mayor, parts of the budget were here, parts of the budget were in other places. You had taxing district things in the main section of the charter that the council had authority over. And what I, what I've done with those, you will find those in the taxing district section of the charter. So there is a council provision in the taxing district of the charter. If those provisions are still used, um, they're there, that's the logical place for them, made no sense to put them anywhere else. So that was the hodgepodge that we were dealing with. So I'll do a word count on the whole thing. Um, numbers of pages, it's still a pretty substantial document, although I think the baseline is under a hundred now on the, uh, which is a pretty good, most of my charter is near. Low hundreds, so in terms of the governance section of the charter, it's, it's been compacted quite a bit. But I will do a number.
Work, thank you, that was just a matter of curiosity, but the, the important thing is that the changes were restructuring the charter so that like things were in. In similar sections, like in, in like sections, basically.
Exactly, that's, that was the, that was the intent when I met.
Sixty two pages without the note, the end notes.
Yeah, it's still a pretty substantial document, there's no way to eliminate that. And I think that the taxing districts, we have friends on the taxing districts, I think that they should really look at their sections.
Yeah.
But as I said, as, as, as the chair said in her letter, the, the, they need to be very careful when you mess with the special act. We're going through this in the next city, uh, on the other side of the border here in Stanford. Um, you need to be very careful about how you, uh, uh, conduct surgery on the special act. Because if you go too far, you really undermine the special act and, and the courts would not look kindly about that.
Yeah.
But there's a lot of separate provisions there.
Yes, there's one that's really jumps out at us all the time and it's a provision for a widow to receive X amount of money every month.
Yes.
Uh, and, and, uh. She probably hasn't been with us for seventy years, you know?
I mean.
Yeah, it's that kind of thing.
We couldn't include, we took the police and fire, fires pension funds out of the charter because they don't exist. I got confirmation from, uh, council to both of those pensions. And so we took those out, which is a lot of pages, I mean, that, you might have seen the reduction in pages in the, in part two of the charter, part three of the charter. Um, we finally concluded that, but with, with poor Mary, I just, uh, we can't confirm that she's still around or that there's people that are related to her, so she's still in the charter.
We challenged, uh, our town clerk to look in the records and he couldn't.
He couldn't find it. And, and the other thing.
Probably moved out of town.
In the taxing districts is a whole bunch of. Anybody know, there's a whole bunch of provisions in taxing districts with dealing with bond issuances from the nineteen thirties. They should all be out of there. I mean, if, if, I, I, you know, I hope that during this process, if you guys know people, the, at the taxing districts. Be nice to eliminate those provisions if they don't make any sense, if they want to come and say, get them out of there. Uh, happy to do it, we did not want to do any surgery on the taxing district. We think they should actually do the first line of.
Very wise.
In there.
Very wise.
Yeah. I'm not as numb as I look, thank you.
All right, um. Moving on to item five on the agenda, um, just quickly. These are proposed, um, dates for future meetings, uh, workshops. And, um, attorney Ben did kind of refer to kind of the roadmap ahead. Um, if you can just provide clarity for, uh, um, letters E. I'll say D, E, F and G. Uh, are those like set dates? Cause I'm envisioning A, B and C. We have some flexibility as to when we actually hold the workshop dates, but. Um, D, E, F and G have very specific dates. Are those, I'll say targeted dates when we need to have work done July tenth, seventeenth, nineteenth and twenty six?
Well, we're, we're working, um, we're, we're working two things, one. You have a maximum time of sixty days, uh, here, we're not gonna use sixty days because that will take us out. Uh, too far to do and get it on the ballot this November. So when, when we talked about these dates some time ago, I thought we came to these understandings so that. The commission would be able to get a report in for the end of July. Um, so that you could act on this at your meeting in August.
Okay.
We really should lock these, those dates in. Um, uh, as soon as we can, I thought they were locked in, but.
All right, that, that's, that's clear, that's fine, you know, I just want to provide some clarity to the council that.
Yeah.
These, these are targeted dates that we're gonna try to work to.
Yeah, and, and the, the real key is you have the public hearing scheduled for, we did it after the fourth of July. Um, to have the public hearing and possibly your deliberations that same night or maybe after. That's your call on how you do that, um, and then you have to have action on. The item within fifteen days following your public hearing. So this is seven days, so we're fine and, um, we're, um. We're getting close to the forty five days, that seventeen, so we're really ki- kind of tied in to getting it done within that timeframe. We have to move things around, we can try to do that. Um, I have to balance it with, I have two other commissions going as well, I'm trying to keep them all on separate tracks. So, uh, we can talk and make sure that works for everybody. We don't have one scheduled for the week of the eighteenth, which would be, uh, our second meeting, we have a meeting. Of the eighteenth, which would be our second meeting. We have a meeting for the twelfth. But we couldn't do Monday. Remember, we agreed on the Monday night. Approach. But that's Juneteenth, so we should look at. Want to do one that week, we should look at another night that week, Mr. President. Because we don't have a firm date that week. We can talk offline.
Seeing, seeing no other business, Ms. Revolus?
Motion to adjourn.
Been a motion to adjourn at nine twenty seven. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries were adjourned nine twenty seven. Thank you.